Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, December 12, 2011. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. So we'd move into the meeting and we'd start with the adoption of the previous meeting minutes. Have a motion for that set of minutes. Councillor Augustinson?
Thanks Mayor Given. I'll move the minutes of the city council meeting held November 28, 2011.
Thanks very much, Councillor Augustinson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We'd move on to the adoption of the agenda. I believe we had one item to add to the agenda. I think this is going to be Councillor Wong.
Thank you Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 8.5, Appointments to Boards and Committees.
Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. Any other discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We did have two presentations scheduled ahead of time, and the first was SLR Consulting on the Regional Waste Study. So I'd ask you to come forward and introduce yourselves and make yourself swell. There's at least one face there that we're fairly familiar with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Michelle Gardner, the manager of the Environmental Sustainability Department at the City of Grand Prairie. To my right is Richard Johnson, who is a consultant with SLR. He'll be presenting our regional waste study executive summary. And to his right is Steve Madden, who is the manager of Environment at the County of Grand Prairie.
Welcome.
As Michelle said, it's, my name is Richard Johnson. I'm a director with SLR Consulting, an environmental consultancy. We were commissioned by the South Peace Group to carry out a study to develop a waste master plan, to take waste management services or the waste management system forward from here to 2030. And what I'd like to do this evening is I'd like to talk through the executive summary that was produced and published based on the work that we carried out. What I'm going to cover off is briefly the study's scope objectives and the key stages of the study. I'm going to look at the master plan itself, which will cover the various objectives that were developed as part of the study. In terms of the scope and the objectives, the master plan was developed to set out a waste management strategy for the South Peace region, including the city and the county of Grand Prairie. The plan was developed to provide a clear roadmap for future waste management services to 2030. And it incorporated stakeholder consultation from a steering committee that was put together. And that steering committee provided input throughout the project. The project made consideration to legislation, federal, provincial, municipal. It also made consideration to existing services in the region, in the South Peace region, and also the broader region as well, looking at the various systems and waste management practices taking place on the boundaries, because that does have a bearing on the waste management plan, the strategy. It also considered future options, future options for waste management within the region. And from all of that, we developed the plan and how we get there, how we actually get to where we want to be by 2030. There were three phases carried out as part of the study. The first phase was to really forecast and generate the options for waste management. The second phase was an audit of the actual services that were carried, were being carried out in the region. And the third phase was the actual pulling together of all of that information into a master plan. In terms of the first phase, we looked at the actual waste being generated within the region in 2010. And some figures to really put out there in terms of that waste that's being generated, around approximately 115,000 tonnes of waste was being produced within the region in 2010. In terms of that tonnage, around about 108,000 is what we consider to be municipal solid waste, MSW. The fraction that is emitted from that is clean soil and concrete and so on and so forth. Of that 108,000 tonnes, 14% is currently being recycled or diverted from landfill, with the remainder going to landfill at the moment. That's some 87% of the waste volume. In terms of the amounts currently being diverted, around 14,500 tonnes are currently diverted of that 108,000. Around 21,500 comprises residential waste. And the biggest proportion, 72,500 tonnes comprises non-residential waste, so commercial, industrial, construction, demolition, and so on and so forth. In addition to understanding the actual waste volume, we also wanted to forecast how that waste was going to change over the next 20 years to 2030. In order to do that, we needed to understand, first of all, the per capita amount of waste generated and how that might change over time going forward, because the community might produce more or less waste depending on various schemes in place. In addition to that, we also wanted to apply to that per capita generation, a diversion target as well. And once we did that, that gave us a forecast for waste growth into the future. And that's quite important because now we know what waste we're going to be dealing with over the next 20 years that we have to have systems and infrastructure in place to manage. In addition to that, we looked at composition of the waste stream as well. We wanted to understand what was in the waste, the municipal solid waste. And interestingly, around about 60% of that waste comprises food waste, yard waste, plastics, and paper. So that's the biggest proportion of that waste. We then took that information and developed a list of options for managing the waste. We started off with 27 options. And through a process of scoring with the steering committee, we narrowed that down to nine options, which we looked at more closely. And again, by scoring and consulting with the steering committee, we brought that down to three options. And those three options comprised 33% recycling or diversion in combination with 100% of the remaining waste going to energy from waste, 33% recycling and diversion with the remaining 100% of that waste going to landfill, and 33% recycling diversion with 50% going to energy from waste and 50% going to landfill. We looked at those three options in great detail. And again, through consultation, we concluded that the most realistic option in terms of moving this forward, the plan forward, was the 33% diversion and recycling with 100% of residual waste going to landfill. So how do we get there? In terms of the project itself, we then developed the master plan. Now, the master plan set out a series of objectives. You can see them on the screens behind you. And those objectives were supported by policies. And those policies were supported by specific actions. And we also assigned responsibility to those actions. In terms of the key objectives of the master plan, there were four objectives. The first objective, the minimization objective, which we've called Objective One, was to reduce the per capita municipal solid waste growth from 1.33 tonnes per person in 2010 to 1.15 tonnes per person by 2030. So that was our minimization target. In terms of the recycling and composting target, Objective Two, we looked at increasing the performance, the recycling and diversion performance from 14%, as it currently is, to 33% by 2030. Objective Three was the treatment and disposal target. And what we looked to do here was to look at ways that we could improve the current disposal practices to optimize performance and efficiency of the system and the service. And in addition to that, the second part of that was within two years to review the longer-term viability of non landfill treatment technologies appropriate for the region. And that comes back to energy from waste. The fourth objective was, within the next two years, to continue to improve data quality and accuracy to support each of the objectives. It's important that we know not only where we're starting from as a baseline, but how we're doing over the coming 20 years, so we can see how successful some of these actions are being. In terms of Objective One, minimization, the policies that we developed were based around providing information and educational options to reduce waste. And in addition to that, the second policy was to minimize the amount of residual waste collected. Now in terms of the education, I won't go through all of the actions here. They're within the executive summary. But in terms of the education, we're looking at supporting businesses, residents, schools through education, the education process, really to engage the community to drive forward the minimization, to produce less waste. In addition to that, we wanted to look at developing a consistent branded message across the region. And just on that point, it's important when we're dealing with this waste management strategy plan, that the county and the region work together in this, to deliver this. It's the best, it's the most appropriate and the best way to do it. So we're looking at developing a branded approach so that your message is on your, in your eco centers or your recycling igloos or on your collection vehicles is the same. And that again reinforces the message to the community. In addition to that, we also wanted to look at minimizing the amount of residual waste collected. So considering the cost of additional bag tags and considering introducing limits to residual waste collection as well. So it's almost a bit of a stick approach there in terms of trying to minimize the amount of residual waste collected. In terms of Objective Two, recycling and composting, remembering that the targets are 14% is our current performance, and we want to increase that to 33% over 20 years with an interim target at 2020 of 24%. And the policies in support of that objective were to improve existing recycling and drop off services, to extend and improve organic waste composting services, to increase participation in commercial and residential recycling schemes, and to assess the feasibility of recycling collection methods. In addition to that, we also need to and want to find sustainable outlets for collected recyclable materials and promote Grand Prairie as a hub, as a recycling hub and a leader. And there were something of the order of 20 actions to deliver those, that objective and those policies. Working in partnership was one of the actions that was top of the list. And again, agreeing a branded approach to this, back to education. Rationalizing and optimizing space at the waste management centers and the eco centers, improving the layouts of transfer stations, making it more convenient to recycle. Look at the composting that was being carried out within the region and to create and generate a higher quality compost that can actually be provided back to the community. And again, that encourages engagement in the system. Develop communication guidelines to be used by all stakeholders. And as I said before, ensure that suitable markets exist and are being developed for recyclables. In terms of Objective Three, which was the treatment and disposal objective, remember the statistics. Currently, there is something of the order of 87% of the total municipal solid waste stream that is being landfilled. And by 2030, we want to see that at 67%. That's your 33% diversion with an interim target of 76% by 2020. In terms of policies to support that, we want to make sure and ensure that there is effective environmental management at the landfill sites. And in addition to that, consider the future viability of energy from waste for residual treatment. In terms of the actions, there are a number of actions that support those policies and that objective. Again, working in partnership to establish landfill sites as eco hubs to encourage greater diversion. Consider the feasibility of rationalizing landfills to one central site supported by a series of waste transfer stations. To develop plans for efficient landfill gas management as part of the management of landfills. To encourage greater source segregation through increased tipping fees for mixed loads, for instance. And also, in terms of the energy from waste side of the policies, is to engage with the market to establish whether there are compatible feedstocks for thermal power, for power generation going forward. And as part of that, undertake a feasibility study to assess the future viability of energy from waste for the treatment of the residual waste stream. Moving on to Objective Four, which is the monitoring and review objective. The policies include improving waste data reporting and management. As I've said before, that's key to understanding how we're doing with the actions that we're implementing. And you need to report annually against the key performance indicators selected. And in addition to that, to reinforce the composition side of the equation, the waste composition side, you need to conduct a waste composition audit and understand that. And again, there are a number of actions and responsibilities associated with that. And those include developing a consistent whole waste system database for the South Peace region to manage that information. Report annually, as I've said before, on the key performance indicators. And commission the compositional waste, whole waste system audit. So in closure then, the plan in summary sets out a clear vision. It provides robust objectives with sound policies supported by realistic actions. And it assigns responsibilities to those actions. It will require a strong commitment for change. And it will require a greater partnership working between the city and the county. And that in itself will also need dynamic leadership and leadership for the broader region. And this will deliver the sustainable waste management, sustainable waste management for the region into the future, for the city and county. And also, the South Peace region can consider itself a waste management hub for the greater region. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. So any questions for the delegation, council in the discussion? Councillor Tool?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. I'd love to thank you guys for coming into. Those are awesome. Proposal for a regional site that you had mentioned just towards the end there. Have you got any proposals, ideas, concerns, where they might go, or where the site might be?
No. I mean, what we did put forward was that that should be a consideration. The study didn't go on to say which site that should be or what site that should be. That I think needs further detailed consideration.
Okay. See a couple other questions. Councillor Monroe?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The targets put forth in this, in this plan, how would they compare to other municipalities such as Red Deer, Lethbridge? Or do they even have a plan, I guess?
Well, some do. How do they compare? I mean, I think this is, first and foremost, this is a plan for the South Peace region. So it's got to be realistic for this region. In terms of how others are doing, if you look across Canada, Nova Scotia's got one of the highest recycling rates in Canada at 45%. B.C. and New Brunswick are around 35%. So I think 33% is reasonably aggressive, but realistic for the region.
Thank you. Okay. Councillor Coak?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks. Is the county on board also with, like, we have our eco center. It's a Grand Prairie initiative. The taxpayers of the city of Grand Prairie only pay for that. But I know the county is involved in using the blue bins and whatever. But is that, is that going to be a bigger partnership, like?
Just perhaps to answer your question for the county, we do provide a contribution to that eco center for assistance with the operation. I guess we have a contract with them to allow the county residents to access. As far as partnership, I think that's what the study was pushing towards. Is there, is there a thought of, you know, further working together? And I think the community is going to kind of carry on at a no cost to municipality and work together and see what we can do together as partnerships.
Okay. Just one further, Mayor Given. I know I've been into the one in Edmonton, the Clover Bar. I mean, that is the ultimate to have here for all of our region. I mean, from height to all the smaller municipalities. And I think that was in number two, was it? Or number three, your alternatives? I think that would be the goal. And you'd be able to have sale of compost back to the community, county, or city, doesn't matter. And really, we wouldn't be needing the landfill. I mean, theirs, I think, was supposed to close in '95 and it's going to be good for another 20 years. So hopefully, we'll, that'll be the vision of this study. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A comment and then a question. It seems to me that the regional waste study, it's looking at targets for reducing the amount of waste and increasing the amount of diversion. But I guess the municipalities don't necessarily have to work together in order to achieve those targets. But my question is, I guess, in order for us to take advantage of new technologies as they emerge, that's when we need to work together. Is that correct? Like, there's a minimum amount of municipal solid waste that has to be collected in order for us to get involved with energy to waste, or waste to energy, sorry?
Waste to energy.
Yeah. Don't want to do it the other way around.
Mr. Johnson?
Economies of scale, of course, will always work. I mean, obviously, the more waste that you can collectively bring together, then the better economic situation you have in terms of energy from waste. It's fair to say that energy from waste is quite a hot topic around the country at the moment, and particularly in Alberta. But there are a lot of technologies out there that are unproven as well. And so the study, whilst the study has looked at that, it has added a note of caution to say, don't forget about it, but think of it in two years' time and see how technologies are developing. Whilst at the same time, bringing the county and the city together in terms of the whole waste system, because that's the best way to make something like that viable.
Okay. So when you talk about economies of scale, would that have the potential to lower the bill for the end user? Or is it just to maintain the, draw the line?
There's no doubt that energy from waste, or any, or recycling, or any treatment that you have for waste that isn't landfill is likely to be more expensive than landfill. And that's the price you have to pay for it if you want to do that. So in terms of bringing the cost down, yes, the more waste you have into the system, the lower the cost should be. But it depends, of course, on what system you decide to implement, an energy from waste system.
Okay. And just one final question, having to do with that energy from waste. Did you, does anyone have a study that kind of shows the economic tipping point in terms of how, how much the technology has to cost and how much energy prices have to be at before a municipality should get involved, or municipalities should get involved in this?
I mean, there are a number of studies out there that do look at that tipping point, as you call it. But they are very specific to the municipalities or the regions that they're dealing with. Because, for instance, waste composition could be a major factor in whether, you know, there's sufficient calorific value, for instance, in the waste. That's the burnability, if you like. That's just one issue. So they do tend to be specific to, you know, the municipalities or the regions that are looking at them.
Okay. I guess I'd love for us to get involved in that. But I realize it's such a, that technology is at its infancy. And we don't want to necessarily be the ones taking that big risk. Thank you.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Question I have, are 14% now in the blue bags being hit with recycling in the city of Grand Prairie. So there's a couple. So how much is the reduction transferring waste from going to the dump and reutilizing it going to go up now from the blue bags? Who would answer that, Michelle? What are we forecasting on that one, that question?
So how much of an impact has blue bag recycling made in terms of seeing Grand Prairie's diversion? Yeah. No, Mayor Given, we won't know the answer to that for quite some time. In my understanding, studies show that you need to give residents at least a six-month trial time because people don't necessarily recycle every week. So they may put their recycling to the curb once a month. And that six months gives you an idea of what it is. So I think you're looking at at least a year before Aqua Terra is going to be able to give accurate numbers on what that reduction is.
Is there estimates of 2%, 4% bumping up, or they haven't done anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And the other question I have about Nova Scotia, I'm glad you brought it up because we were at FCM in Halifax. And of course, I jotted Cape Breton where I was born, and I got family. And they live in the countryside. And they completely do what we're doing in town for blue bags. So I'm just wondering if the county's going to be jumping on board and maybe doing that with their residents in the county.
Certainly, the waste study provides some areas that, you know, either municipality can improve upon. Curbside is not something we're into right at this point. We haven't directly been asked to go that direction. We're still working with the Dgos because we're residential, you know, we're a rural area to try to cover as much of our population as possible. But right at this point, we haven't been pursuing that directly as an item. We're waiting for the waste study to give us some, some ideas and then perhaps go from there.
So in terms of bringing the cost down, yes, the more waste you have into the system, the lower the cost should be. But it depends, of course, on what system you decide to implement, an energy from waste system.
Okay, and just one final question, having to do with that energy from waste. Did you, does it, does anyone have a study that kind of shows the economic tipping point in terms of how, how much the technology has to cost and how much energy prices have to be at before a municipality should get involved? Or municipalities should get involved in this?
I mean, there are a number of studies out there that, that do look at that tipping point, as you call it. But they are very specific to the municipalities or the regions that, that they're dealing with. Because, for instance, waste composition could be a major factor in whether the, you know, there's sufficient calorific value, for instance, in the waste. That's the burnability, if you like, of the waste. That's just one, one issue. So they, they, they do tend to be specific to, you know, the municipalities or the regions that are looking at them.
I guess I'd, I'd love for us to get involved in that, but I realize it's such a, that technology is at its infancy and we don't want to necessarily be the ones taking that big risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Question I have, we're fourteen percent now on the blue bags being hit with recycling in the city of Grand Prairie. So there's a couple. So how much is the reduction transferring waste from going to the dump and reutilizing it going to go up now from the blue bags? Who would answer that, Michelle? What are we forecasting on that one, that question?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Councilor.
So how much of an impact has blue bag recycling made in terms of the city of Grand Prairie's diversion?
Yeah, no, Mayor Given, we won't know the answer to that for quite some time. In my understanding, studies show that you need to give residents at least a six-month trial time because people don't necessarily recycle every week. So they may put their, their recycling to the curb once a month. And that six months gives you an idea of what, what it is. So I, I think you're looking at at least a year before Aqua Terra is going to be able to give accurate numbers on what that reduction is.
Is there estimates of two, four percent bumping up, or they haven't done anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and the other question I have about Nova Scotia, I'm glad you brought it up because we were at FCM in Halifax and of course I jotted Cape Breton where I was born and I got family. And they live in the countryside and they completely do what we're doing in town for blue bags. So I'm just wondering if the county's going to be jumping on board and maybe doing that with their residents in the, in the county.
Certainly the waste study provides some areas that, you know, either municipality can improve upon. Curbside is not something we're into right at this point. We haven't directly been asked to go that direction. We're still working with the Dgos because we're residential, you know, we're a rural area to try to cover as much of our population as possible. But right at this point, we haven't been pursuing that directly as, as an item. We're waiting for the waste study to give us some, some ideas and then perhaps go from there.
Just don't, if I'd like to say, Mayor Given, maybe you can look at, because my grandma and aunt's uncle's in the county, been doing it for over a decade. So I think there's information from Nova Scotia province.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor Rice?
Did your studies, I mean, if, if one wants to build a new landfill, you are talking of hundreds of millions of dollars or, or close to it to say nothing of the NIMBY factor. So citing it would be very difficult. So did, did your study show, and I didn't pick up on it, if you go option one, you will extend the life of your current landfills X number of years? Option two, option three, which is huge potential savings?
The, what the study did was it gave some high-level indications of the lifespan left within the landfill sites within the region. There are three landfill sites.
Yes.
And the, the number of years left within those landfills varied from forty years to somewhere in the order of seven hundred years. So there's a lot of landfill space left available. You're quite right in what you say is the more that you divert, the longer the lifespan of those landfills is going to be. And you could argue that you've got sufficient volume in the existing system to, to certainly get you well beyond twenty thirty.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. So any further questions for the delegation? Seeing none, and thank you very much for the presentation. Council deals with its delegation business towards the end of our agenda, so we'll deal with your presentation then. But thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Sure, Councilor Rice?
Your presentation was just to bring us up to date. You're not asking for anything at this point.
Mayor Given, Councilor Monroe will bring some information forward up the delegation.
Oh, so it'll be him asking? Okay.
Yeah, so at this point, I mean, the, it's fair to say that the, the study has been completed. It's being presented to the partners that funded the study and then likely we would adopt it or take some sort of action with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. So that was the first of our delegations that had let us know in advance that they were coming. We had a second delegation from Kev's Kids who wanted to come and address city council. And so I see a few folks that may be related to that. If you'd like to come and make your way to the presenter's table and introduce yourselves to council, make yourselves welcome.
Hi, guys. How are you all today? That's good. My name is Andrew Wilcox. I'm the program director of Rock ninety-seven, seven, and a member of the Kev's Kids Board. This is Kevin Albers.
And I'm the head chair of Kev's Kids.
You're the Kev?
I am the Kev.
And Kev's Kids.
And sometimes the kid.
So we've hit a major milestone with our charity that we, we started up, Kev started up just a little while ago. So what we want to do is something massive to celebrate that. I'm going to let Kevin right now kind of describe what Kev's Kids is for anybody that doesn't know and what the goal of it is. And I'm just going to hand out, I didn't bring enough copies and I apologize, but I'm going to hand out a press release that we released earlier on this week to kind of describe what has happened and what's going on right now.
Sorry?
Media release.
Is she smart like that the whole time?
Yes.
Pretty much, it's true.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Those of you that aren't aware, we've hit the milestone of, of a million dollars. And, thank you. It is, it is very unique. And those of you that aren't up to speed with Kev's Kids is a former manager, Tom Bedore, some of you may, or may not know. We came up with an idea that we're going to start this charity and try to help basically kids that would have nowhere else to go in our city, in our community. I shouldn't say just our city because we've helped as far as Flare and surrounding areas. But what's unique about our charity is, I say, and it's literal, that every cent raised goes to the kids. We have no overhead. We're lucky to have an amazing board of volunteers that cover everything. The company I currently work for, Rogers, that owns Rock ninety-seven, seven, covers all the paper and within the station. We have a volunteer system for our accounting, who's also a new board member. We have, our taxes are done pro bono and, and all our stuff filed at the end of the year. But what's unique to this charity is, is where the money comes from. We do, we do absolutely no fundraising. The city of Grand Prairie, our community, has raised literally every single penny. From kids refusing presents at their birthday parties to construction companies, oil companies, you know, raising money at barbecues, golf tournaments, the list goes on. One very famous man is Breen, who had his famous vacation last winter, who camped out for his two weeks holidays at the Adco parking lot, which was a huge success. And in that ten years that the, the charity's existed, about halfway through it, there are radio stations in Edmonton called The Bear had reached a milestone of ten years. The difference between them is, A, obviously the size of the city. Second, they fundraise. Everything from, from charity fundraisers to selling product, T-shirts with proceeds going to. What makes us so unique again is we do not raise the money. The community decides to give us the, give their faith to us and bring us the money. And in ten years, we've raised over a million dollars, which is amazing. So what we basically want to do is thank the city. And how we want to do that is what Andrew will describe.
Okay, well, first off, I'll just kind of go through this, this media release that I put out earlier this week. And some of it Kev has already talked about, and then we'll get into what we hope to do with the city's involvement or where maybe is a starting point we can discuss. Just under ten years ago, as Kevin described, Kevin Albers wanted to give back to the community.
And actually, if I may interrupt one time, we've, we've spent three quarters of a million dollars. So the need is there and, and the money's getting out, which I think is, is important as well.
Again, yeah, it's not all sitting in the, sitting in the bank waiting to get used. It's being used. So basically, as Kev described, over, over, under ten years, which is mind-blowing to me, we've raised this million dollars. The Sargent Family has helped us out several times over that to make a total, giving us a total of over fifteen grand in that time. So a little while ago, at the, at the board meeting in November, we came to realize, just basically looking at the balance, just going, wait, whoa, wait a second. We're, we're this close to a million dollars. I, I thought it wasn't really even like we were watching it as it happened. Like, I'm brand new, but the, the basic vibe that I got was they weren't watching as this happened. We just went, oh, my God, it's almost there. It's almost Christmas. It's the season of giving. We've got to make this happen. The Sargent Family Foundation, they stepped in and said, okay, we're going to give five thousand dollars. We'll kickstart some giving. We figured, you know what? Perfect. We'll be able to talk about this over the next two, three weeks and hopefully we'll be able to grab that extra. At the time, which was fourteen grand or something like that. Once we had gotten some more donations in and had said literally, I think, three times on the radio that this was happening, we were not only at the million dollars, but past it. We literally in one phone call had what we needed left when we did the final balance the second day. We were like, okay, we are six thousand, two hundred dollars short. Guy phones in, six thousand, three hundred, we're over it. And that was Catwalk Compression that came in and did that, which was absolutely amazing to us. And that didn't stop the phone calls. They continued to come in with huge donations. I think one was four thousand dollars and one was another three. So as of today, we sit at a total of one million, seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And that continues to grow on, on literally one mention, thousands come in. It's, it, I, I am brand new to this city. I've lived here now for two months as of next Monday. And I have never, see, I've worked in seven, eight radio stations and he, in four in Alberta, one in Manitoba, been in Toronto, and I've never seen a city respond that way on the radio. It is mind-blowing to us. So when the two of us sit up here, we're not sitting here going, look at what our radio station has done. It wasn't us. It was literally the citizens of this town and the area around it, which I'm still getting to know. So the reason that we come here, the reason that we sit in front of you is because we were sitting around going, okay, well, how do we thank an entire city of people for doing this? Well, we hopefully can do a bunch of things over the next year to thank people. But one of the ideas that came forward to us and the reason that we've come here is, one of our thoughts was, and hopefully very soon we're able to do this, is that we have literally a free day. Where all city facilities are free to the public to use. We will also, as a radio station, go to one of those facilities and hand out free cake, free drinks, free whatever to anybody. We'll get sponsors on board to provide that type of stuff. Because once again, and it's a constant mandate of, of Kev's Kids, not a single dime from that charity is coming out to do anything. And that's not coming out to, to celebrate anything. It's not coming out to pat ourselves on the back. It's, you, you know, we're going to get sponsors to do everything for free and we want to make this as zero cost as we can. So that's the idea that we've brought forward. That's the idea that we wanted to put to you guys tonight. If that is a possibility, if that's something you'll consider, I can, we'll put together a proposal for you guys and we will show you what the value is that the radio station will do. If that's something that you deem to be a large part of this, we will be supporting it in a major way from a radio station's standpoint. And we will, of course, involve the city in it. But I don't really feel like that is the reason that we sit here. The reason that we sit here is we are literally looking for a way to thank the city. And the conversation that we've had with board members and with members of the radio station is that we want to continually make sure that we push the fact that this is a thank you to the city. Well, I digress. The reason that we sit here, is that an idea that you feel is something that we can do? Is that something that you guys would like to participate in?
Okay, so this is the first, the council's hearing of it, obviously. And we, during our delegation portion, have an opportunity for council members to ask questions. And then at the end of our council agenda, we have business arising from delegations. And so if there's any action coming out of this, so now it'd be an opportunity for council members to ask questions. And then, as I said, towards the end of our agenda, as with the last presentation, we deal with the, the presentation. And any business, any questions for the delegation? Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks, guys. I know I've personally given jackets to your Kevin's Coats for Kids. Do you have any idea what kind of a gift and kind this would cost, the city of Grand Prairie?
That we haven't, we haven't considered. I mean, we wouldn't be able to, to know what exactly it would cost.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea? Or do we?
Lisa, you were the one, see, with that number?
Well, that number was if all the facilities were at capacity, it could be up to twenty thousand dollars that could be spent on that day. But we were thinking, if you guys figure out, sorry, the city background, I should have brought it to my.
No problem.
If we did it on, say, a Wednesday, you could look at how much money the city received the Wednesday, the week before in funds from drop-in fees and that sort of thing, see exactly on a weekday how much is spent. And then you got to let, so we could give you this even value in return for emotional.
I'm sorry, that's Lisa, one of our sales managers, who was also a Kev's Kids Board member.
Be nicer if she was sitting up front. She's a lot better looking.
Yeah, but then I use the crayons if she comes up here with.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Any further questions?
Nope, thank you.
Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think it's a great idea. I know municipal days, they had the free day for the pool. It was pretty ugly weather that day. But I think it would probably be, are you looking at just one day or were you looking at?
Just one day. And, and I mean, we have a beautiful new structure that, I mean, would be ironically a great way to celebrate too, right? And, and for us to promote. And, and I think that's also the angle. Our mandate isn't just to talk about Kev's Kids because really that isn't what this is about at this point because it's what the city has done to make it successful. So let's celebrate the city. Let's talk about what it has to offer. And that's pretty much it. And we are, we're growing each and every day. I mean, I've lived here for fifteen years, came for two, just like everybody else. And my God, how it's changed. It's, it's miraculous.
Yeah, wait twenty years, if you're in twenty years.
About four Apollodons by then.
Uh, see, Councilor Rice?
Okay, and, and certainly, Kevin, the celebrating municipal government is something that we do annually on Municipal Government Day, as you're aware. And, and do profile on your show every year.
No, I think that's abuse. I don't think that's profiled.
Do you see, there's two questions and they're, they're somewhat theoretical questions. Do you see that there is a potential for this day to be combined with Municipal Government Day? Number one?
Sure, Councilor Rice, go ahead.
And the second, if it happens, I have the control. Do you, suppose we were to come back to say one facility, one day? Is that something your board would look at or is it an all for every, all for nothing or whatever?
I'm not sure about the, the combining with Municipal Day. I would really love to have, for it to have its own standalone day. I mean, it doesn't have, this is not going to be an ongoing thing. This is a one-time thing. But yeah, definitely.
Until we hit two million.
Until we hit two million, which hopefully will be about three, four years. Yeah, we'll do it. Definitely, we are open to it being one particular facility or, you know, that's, that's why we didn't come here and go, this is the, this is what we want to do. This is for you guys to discuss for sure. If it is going to be one facility, I would love it to be the new multiplex.
Wouldn't everybody?
Well, I just love it to get, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we'd love it, love it to be the, love it to be the new multiplex.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. Councilor McLean? Mayor O'Toole, excuse me?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. Kevin, thanks very much for showing up today. That's awesome news. What kind of an idea, a timeline were you looking at? Like, did you want to do it in the spring or?
Well, we, we, we didn't know, we were trying to time, it, it just happened to happen at Christmas, honestly. That was the way of what, we thought we really wouldn't achieve it till after the new year because like everybody else, we're busy at this time of year. And we kind of almost wished it wouldn't have hit now because we could put more focus on it. So we were hoping for probably, you know, within the next couple of months.
I would like to do this one within the next couple of months. I don't want to let the shine wear off of what has happened. I think this is pretty amazing and pretty massive. And to celebrate a million and half, a hundred thousand, it's not the same as celebrating that one big million. So I would really like to make it happen within January or February.
As a, as a radio station, we want to celebrate the whole year in different ways, but this would, yeah, the big baby.
This is, this is the big kickoff. This is the, the first big thank you.
We do have family day. That might be something that you might want to look at.
There you go.
Just leave that for your thoughts to ponder. Thanks very much.
Well, I mean, if, if that's something you guys want to do, my thought was really to do it in a time that was, was not a busy, busy, busy time. That may have been a time that, and when, as we said, like a Wednesday or a Thursday, so that we're not taking the busiest day of the week, but still taking a busy day. We don't want to be, oh, guys, well, sure, have the Monday. Well, it's, that's, people, I wanted to make sure it's a day that people can take advantage of it, but it doesn't have to be your busiest day. And, because we understand that the cost of that is and we understand what revenue from these types of things, how important that is.
Don't go backwards. He wants to give us family day. No, don't go backwards.
If he's got family day, I'm into that.
Can we have Christmas? Can we have Christmas Day?
Okay, thanks very much. Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So first of all, Kev, I just want you to, I wanted to say that I want to pass along a hello to your daughters, Amy and Anna. For your request, would you be open to making that a few hours of a day as opposed to an entire day? The multiplex has an operational budget of over nine million dollars a year. It's twenty-five thousand dollars a day. So I, I don't know that we would want to have the facility just exclusively used for celebrating one event for, free for an entire day, but maybe hit a few peak hours and really blow out a celebration.
We're here asking you for a favor, so whatever you guys deem appropriate is obviously going to be fine with us. We'll take what we can get.
I mean, I mean, we can't necessarily celebrate it during the morning show, but maybe the, if, I hate to throw, you know, maybe the idea would be we do the drive show, which is three hours long. We broadcast live for the entire thing. We put cake and food out there for that time and we do it during that time. So that's the time that we do it. That's also a possibility too.
Or a Saturday afternoon.
Or a Saturday afternoon where we can, yeah.
And I guess just a word of advice, when you do put a proposal in, we're, we're probably going to need a proposal structured in a way that it doesn't open the door for every community group to come to City Hall asking for a free day at the multiplex or free, free celebration? Because it wouldn't be possible for us to do that.
Fair enough.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Any further questions for the delegation? No, no, doesn't look like any guys. Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Sorry, Councilor McLean? Sorry, can you just? Thanks very much for the presentation. Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, thank you guys for your time.
More than anything, congratulations. That's a long time and certainly fantastic support to the community and all the projects that have been launched through the quarter of million dollars of giving that have gone back out into the community. I think that's fantastic news and should be celebrated. So as I said, we'll deal with all the delegation business towards the end of our agenda. So you're welcome to sit through the meeting and enjoy, or you can also review online as all of our meetings are webcast and archived, so.
And in all seriousness, one final note, because you guys are very connected to the community, one... community. One issue we have with KEV's kids is it's hard to find people to spend the money on. Uh, people get embarrassed, there's stigma. If you know of anybody that you think we can handle, please, in all means, send them our way, uh, rock977 dot save, because we always need somebody to push somebody in our direction. We'd appreciate it.
And, and kids involved in this, I think part of it is that we are a radio station. That's a big part of it. Kids that come to this and families that come to this are treated with the absolute most respect and, and, and anybody possible. If they say they don't want to be talked about, they don't want to be mentioned, they don't want anything to come of it, it never will come of it. They allow us to, to talk about it, we talk about it. So, yeah, so if you know anybody, feel free to put it front. And once again, guys, thank you guys very, very much for taking the time to, to listen to us today.
Thanks. Thanks very much, guys. Thank you very much. So this is still the delegation portion of our agenda, an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. Looks a little bit like our gallery may have just emptied out with, uh, no community members left to make any sort of presentation. So I think that's probably an appropriate sign that we should move on, uh, and we'll move on, uh, to the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have none, there is no unfinished business. And that brings us to reports, and item 8.1, the 2012 to 14 operating and capital budgets. Now, we have a recommendation, but maybe we could have an introduction from administration on this, considering the fact that there were, uh, some changes to the positive. Mr. Anderson, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, we have made, in our final review, we have made some adjustments from the original rates that we had last month, and we have rates of 4.0, 3.7 percent, and 3.3 percent, and that would be over the three-year period from 2012 through 14 respectively. And we have, uh, we have used the financial stabilization reserve by $2 million to moderate the property tax increases. We've also used 1.7 million from the municipal sustainability initiative to lessen the property tax increases. And once we get to the spring, we will finalize our property tax bylaw, and that's essentially when the rates get finalized.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Anderson. Um, so an opportunity for, um, this is new information, so if there's anybody that had any questions about it, I'd be willing to take those questions now, and if not, then I'd look for a, a motion to deal with the 2012 to 14 operating and capital budgets. Counselor O'Toole?
Uh, I'd like to recommend a motion, Mr. Mayor, that council approve the 2012, 2014 operating capital budgets.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So, uh, this is a motion that essentially formalizes council's adoption of the work that we did, uh, through the, uh, council committee, the whole process, uh, through the budget discussions. Ultimately, the, uh, the, uh, bylaw that would enact this would come in the spring when council sets the mill rate, so. Uh, any other discussion, debate, questions or comments? Counselor Kropen?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, Tocan, does this reflect any increase in, uh, assessments that will come on board, like, next year and the year after? Is, is there, when we do tweaking, will that tweak it downwards if there's more assessment? Because there's, there's been a lot of commercial construction.
Mr. Anderson?
Mayor Given, we do make estimates on the assessment growth, and we've assumed amounts, I believe, under $1 million for 2012, and about 1.5 million for 13 and 14. If they're different from that, if we exceed those amounts, then it would lessen the tax impact.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think that council did a really good job at balancing all the needs of the community, um, with our growth, and, uh, what we feel is the proper amount of, um, development in the city. So I strongly support the operating and capital budget, the way, the way it has been, uh, set up, and, uh, I think that, that the tax impact is reflective of inflation, plus a little bit, but we did have a lot of requests coming to us, and I think we balanced off, uh, approving a lot of those needs and declining the ones that we felt just didn't fit in there.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing no one in the queue, then I would call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, so we'll move on to the item 8.2, Downtown BRZ Board of Directors, Counselor Rice.
Uh, I'll declare conflict. That's my employer.
Thank you. So Counselor Rice declares a conflict of interest and has left, left the council chambers. Uh, I can see Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council appoint Ms. B. Bell for a term ending 2012 to the Downtown Building Revitalization Zone, BRZ Association Board of Directors.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Uh, Counselor Monroe, open for discussion and debate?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, Counselor Radburn, just, I believe, a slight correction. I think it's the Downtown Business Revitalization Zone. I think there's a typo on our sheet.
Good catch. Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. If we could call back Counselor Rice into the council chambers. And that brings us to item 8.3, Bylaw C-1083-05 Amendment to the Meadowview Area Structure Plan and Amendment to the Cobblestone East Outline Plan, and Bylaw C-1100-177 Land Use Bylaw Amendment. We're going to have an introduction from administration on this one. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The, there was an application received by the planning department to, um, essentially rezone a multifamily site from the current zoning of RM Medium Density Residential to RL Low Density Residential. Uh, and so in order to address that proposal, a number of amendments are required, starting at the top. It would be the area structure plan. This area falls in, um, the area that's covered by the Meadowview Area Structure Plan. It's the outline plan that, um, this area is governed by is the Cobblestone East Outline Plan, and of course, the rezoning is dealt with by way of the land use bylaw amendment. Uh, the subject parcel is highlighted on the screen. It is right here, of course, this being the Cobblestone neighborhood to the west, and Ivy Lake to the north, 100th Avenue. We recommend that council set the, um, second and third reading, public hearing for January 9th, 2012.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Um, any questions from council? If not, I would look for a motion to set a date and time for these, uh, bylaws, excuse me, first reading. Thank you. Counselor Rice?
Do, uh, you need first reading of each bylaw or them combined? Each? I would move first reading of Bylaw C-108305.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. So we have a motion for first reading. I will call for the vote. Thank you. Counsel Rice?
I would move first reading of Bylaw C-1100177.
Thank you. So motion for first reading of bylaw, that bylaw, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And date and time, I think, Counsel Rice?
I would move that we establish Monday, January 9th, 2012, at 6:30 PM in council chambers as a date, time, and location for a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. And so that would be for both?
Yes.
Just make that as part of the motion, so it's...
Okay. For both, uh, of those bylaws.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. So any discussion or debate as to date, time, and location? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. I don't believe there's any other business arising from that item. That would bring us to item 8.4, the Strategic Priorities Chart. Uh, this is a regular course of business, as council amends its strategic priorities chart, and I wonder if the Director of Intergovernmental Services could give us a review of the highlights of changes. Jeanette?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, the Strategic Priorities Chart outlines the, uh, updated, uh, strategic priorities for council and administration. Um, a number of changes have been made to the chart. Under the, um, corporate priorities, council has included fiscal impact analysis. Under the advocacy priorities, uh, have been updated to include internet voting pilot project, and the operational strategies have been updated to reflect the current priorities and target dates for the city manager's office and each service area.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jeanette, uh, any discussion or debate, questions or comments, or motions arising? Counsel Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council approve the strategic priorities chart for the term January to March 2012. In speaking to it, I think that, uh, we had really good discussion around what our priorities should be, and I'm really proud to say that I've been around since the inception of the strategic priorities chart, and I've seen items come in and filter through the system and become operational, and it seems to be working really well. Uh, even our advocacy priorities, I've seen them go to, uh, the provincial government, and it looks like, um, we, it, it really directs our efforts as a council, and it seems to be working, so. I, I really support, uh, the strategic priorities chart.
Yep. Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And then bring us to our item that we added to the agenda, item 8.5, Board and Committee Appointments. And Counsel Rice, I think you're going to handle this one for us?
Okay. I would move the following appointments. Terry Head be appointed to the 100th Anniversary Committee for the remainder of a term ending December 31st, 2012. You want them all at once?
Sure.
Okay. And move that Edward Bader and Robert Howie be appointed to the Arts Development Committee for a three-year term, for each for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2014. That Linda Murphy be appointed to the Assessment Review Board for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2014. That Cyril Guravich and Bob Hall be appointed to the Grand Prairie Airport Commission for three-year terms ending December 31st, 2014, and Ken Riley be appointed to the Grand Prairie Airport Commission for a two-year term ending December 31, 2013. That Wade Pilott and Tamara Zar be appointed to the Library Board for three-year terms ending December 31st, 2014. That Tammy Brown and Brad Cameron be appointed to the Pursuit of Excellence Committee for three-year terms ending December 31st, 2014. That Linda Murphy and Brian Younger be appointed to the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for three-year terms ending December 31st, 2014.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. So this is, uh, again, an annual part of, uh, council business, as, uh, a number of appointments, public appointments to agencies and boards, um, expire, and so an opportunity to get some new folks from the community volunteering, and we certainly appreciate those people who put their names forward. Any, uh, discussion or debate on the motion? Then I'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries, and I believe that handled all of our reports and would take us into committee business, and would start with, first, with the minutes of the council committee, the whole meetings. And Counsel Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the council committee, the whole meetings held on November 9, 10, 2011, and November 16 to 18, 2011. These are basically the minutes of our five days of, uh, capital and operating budget discussions. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Uh, so we have a motion to accept those two sets of minutes. Any, uh, notes, uh, errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and that would take us to item 9.2, and the Public Works Committee from November 29th. And Counsel Gustafson, I think you should have that set of minutes for us.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held November 29th, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counsel Gustafson. Uh, any discussion on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council extend the period for subdivision approval and endorsement for subdivision application Z-2008-0020, lots 3 and 4, Plan 175, sorry, 1735 TR for an additional year.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve a request to extend the period for subdivision approval and endorsement for subdivision application Z-2008-0016, PTNW-11-716 West of the Sixth Plan, 0321859 Lot 1, Block 1, for two months to expire on February 17th, 2012.
Thanks, Counsel Gustafson. That's, uh, that's thoughtful. Uh, any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move that council approve a client-engineer agreement, scope of change, for the amount of $160,560 to ISL Engineering and Land Services to be funded from cap, from existing funds in the 100th Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Capital Project.
Thanks, Counsel Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor McLean?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I don't know who speak to this, Gary or Frank, uh, what the addition was, uh, for on the bridge, why it's an extra $160,000.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Skavitch?
Thank you, Mayor Given. During council's deliberations of the capital budget presentation, council decided to go with a, uh, scope of work that would increase the life of the bridge from 15 years to 50, and to accommodate that, there's additional engineering, and as ISL was already awarded the previous, uh, scope of work, we're just adding to that to enable that additional construction work to be done.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Skavitch. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counsel Gustafson, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Uh, just briefly, uh, we talked in great detail about the snow removal parking ban, and as you all noticed, it hasn't snowed since, so it must be working.
Is that the snow removal snow ban?
No, no, no.
Something else?
So, um, these discussions, sometimes it feels like they don't really go anywhere, but I'm, I'm glad we had the discussion around the table, because it highlighted a bunch of things to the way we develop property and the way we do business in Grand Prairie,
to the way we develop property and the way we do business in Grand Prairie, so I'm glad we had that discussion and able to discuss more of these types of things in the future. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. So we move on to Protective Services Committee from December 6th, and I think Councilor Wong, that was your meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held December 6th, 2011.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Wong.
Yes, I move that council enter into a mutual aid agreement with Alberta Sustainable Resources Development. And in speaking to that, Mayor Given, we, we've always had an agreement with SRD, but it was a second-hand agreement through our county fire services contract. So this, because the city now is not handling the county's fire contract, we have to have our own agreement with them. And this is for mutual aid in case there is regional disaster that requires either help from regional services into the city or city services out into other jurisdictions. There would be the ability to offer services at a cost that the other parties would, would have to pay for. SRD has agreed to the rate schedule that was approved by council in bylaw C-1261. And in short, this is just something that I believe is beneficial to the city. Fires like the ones that happened at Canfor where we would require assistance, we'd have to have an agreement like this in place.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong, was there anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
I just, I guess I should highlight that we did have a discussion on the Fire Department wage increase, and that was, the report just basically said that, that it went through, through to arbitration, and it was binding arbitration, so someone else decided for us what the, what the wage increase should be. And that's, you know, that's the way, or that's the direction that council did give to try to keep our costs under control. The other discussion we had was on regulation of liquor store hours, and after a report that was given by administration and the discussion around the table, we chose not to take any action at this time.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. So we'll move on from the Protective Services Committee to the General Government Services Committee from December 6th, and Councilor Radburn, that was yours. Pachet.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held December 6th, 2011.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the appointment of Myers-Norse Penny LLP as a successful candidate of RFP 20-211-11 for audit services. The brief context here is that four submissions were reviewed, two were significantly over the budgeted costs, of the other two, Myers-Norse Penny was the highest evaluated proposal. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that would bring us through all, oh, sorry, Councilor Radburn, did you have anything else from that set of minutes that you wanted to highlight?
Just quickly, we did receive the airport 2012 business plan, and we received the financial updates to September 30th. That information sho, I guess showed or estimated that we would have a surplus at end year pending something significant happening, with revenues and expenditures of $1.750 million. Yeah, I think that was largely through some fiscal services, some kind of unfortunate news that some of that is the increased tax penalties, increased revenues in our investment income, and WCB dividend, and the operating contingency we probably won't be able to, won't need to use. That was, I guess, on the plus side. On the negative side, in terms of over budget, it was about .75 million over in the snow removal and the street lighting areas and public works. So anyway, it looks like our year-end will be positive.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. So that would move us through all of our committee business. We had no items, of course, but we did have two delegations, and so I look for any motions arising from delegation business. Councilor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just in regards to the SLR presentation or delegation that we had here, I'd like to try a motion, I guess, if I could. Three-part motion. I'd move the, that council, number one, receive the South Peace Regional Solid Waste and Recycling Master Plan. Number two, direct the Regional Solid Waste Committee to develop implementation strategies for the plan. And number three, refer the plan to the Environment Committee to monitor progress. And just to speak briefly to this, Mayor Given, I think a lot of work has gone into this plan. I think it's highlighted some very achievable targets for us to, to reach, in particular going to a 33% diversion, pardon me, 33% recycling versus our current 14%. And I think any amount that we can divert out of our landfill, regardless of how many years are left on the landfill, is, is very important. And I think in order to achieve those goals, these are the steps that we need to take to make sure that we're going to stay on top of it, continue to monitor it, and as well, I think it also gives us the option when we're talking about waste to energy as well down the road. So I think that this would, would be a, a great plan to go with, and that's it. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And those motions carry. That motion, three-part motion. Councilor Rice.
I was moving on to the next one.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Rice.
I would move that the request from Kev's kids be referred to administration to come back to council with a proposal, complete with costs, for a one-day celebration. In speaking to that motion, I know that there is a day called National Philanthropy Day. I don't know if that's, you know, too far in the future or when it is, or if we celebrate it in Canada, but certainly something to think about.
And so Councilor Rice, when you say bring back to council, maybe it would be through the appropriate standing committee? Would that be the right way, or?
I'm just concerned, because we are taking a break now for Christmas. By the time it comes to the committee and they had expressed an interest in it being January or February, so. Okay, I'll move it to the appropriate committee, I guess, yeah. Move it, come back to council through the appropriate committee. Quickly.
Thanks very, thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion?
And I'm looking at Mr. Roth because I assume he would be the appropriate committee because I hope it wouldn't be Mr. Descavage because I don't think the landfill is kind of what they had in mind.
Might be Mr. Anderson's committee, depending on the cost. Councilor Wong.
I just wanted to make sure that administration is clear that we want them to work with the organization to come up with a proposal for the committee.
Okay. Okay. Well, yeah, I think administration will work with them to find out what that is, and then that information will come back and council will review it. Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe that deals with all of our delegation business. We had no notices of motion, and for council member reports, there were a couple of council members that said that they had reports, Councilor Radburn and Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick report on our first, my first, sorry, my first Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association meeting, December 5th. This was the first board meeting following the AGM. Just to let everyone know that Joel Acton is the new chair and Jason Hawa is Vice Chair. And there will be a new executive director announcement forthcoming in a short period of time. We're just going through some discussions with the selected candidate. And I will say that I don't know if there are many municipal pointy changes other than myself, but there are several, several new public members elected. I think that about two-thirds of the public board members are new, so are looking at hopefully a new direction with respect to regional tourism. I want to thank past Chair Ken Loudon and thank our council representative Dan Juan for the good work over the last number of years to move the organization forward, and hopefully we can take a next step. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. And Councilor O'Toole, you had something on the J. Currie Dinosaur Museum.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Actually, I've got two reports. Start off with the library, please. And Dawn Silver, she's the new library director, and her first day at work was today. And tomorrow, I look forward to meeting her at our library board meeting. So she come from Ontario, and so far, she likes it. She's been here a week. As the Philip J. Currie, we have 29 out of the 30 municipalities that are on board and have given letters of support, so we can pass those on to government agencies. We have five local Chamber of Commerce that have also given their support, and one that's we're quite proud of is we got all the First Nations and the Matisse in the municipality region on board as well. So we've got letters of support from all of those additional groups. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. If there were no other council member reports, then we would start with roundtable, and we'll start with Councilor Monroe.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Kind of a busy couple of weeks here. November 30th, had a CRI Steering Team Meeting. December 1st, Joint City/County Recreation Committee Meeting. I sat in on that, so it was good to see what initiatives are coming forth between both us and the county. December 2nd, I attended my very first AUMA Environment and Sustainability Meeting. Some of the hot topics that we're going to be working on over the course of the next year is the water issues facing all communities, and that is, of course, the viability of the drinking water and wastewater systems throughout Alberta, as well as dealing with some of the brownfield situations that a number of the communities are, are faced with. It was more of an orientation session for me, being brought up to speed on what's, what's been going on, but I'm really looking forward to what this committee can do in the next year. December 3rd was the city Christmas party. December 4th, Santa Claus Parade, my very first parade out there, and unbelievable how many kids were out there just grabbing all the candies they could. December 5th, I attended the Volunteer Services Bureau Breakfast where Cheryl Weaver was announced Volunteer of the Year, so congratulations to Cheryl Weaver. December 5th as well was the Scores Dinner at the Coca-Cola Center. December 7th, I attended the Canadian Home Builders Mix and Mingle Event, so I was just there briefly. I'm not sure if there was a presentation afterwards, but I'm, I saw a number of other councillors there as well. The morning of December 8th, I was at Centre 2000 to listen to Tab Pollock announce his intentions to run for the GP Smokey MLA nominations for the PC Party. December 8th as well, Chamber Mixer at Modern Decor Carpet One. Parking was a little bit of an issue, but there was still plenty of room in the facility and lots of great food. And then, of course, December 10th was present for the multiplex ribbon cutting. Thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Councilor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Again, I was at the strategic meeting we had with council on December 1st, the Joint City/County Recreational Meeting, that was very interesting. On December 4th, best ever Santa Claus Day Parade. I mean, I've been to a number of them in my time, and it was almost like the July Parade. I mean, the weather corresponded or cooperated with us, and we never ran out of candy, thanks to Jody and not thanks to Councilor McLean, he was giving away handfuls, but anyway, we survived. On December 5th, I attended a meeting at the Legends Lounge with members of the Scores Committee for Food and Fellowship. December 6th in the morning, I attended the CMHT Breakfast for stats on our Grand Prairie economy, housing starts, et cetera, and it's, it's a light at the end of the tunnel and it's not a grizzly bear holding a flashlight, thank goodness. December 7th, I attended the Centre 2000 Meeting and the Fellowship after. December 8th, I attended a Friends of the Grand Spirit Foundation Meeting. Just to give you an idea of what this committee has done since 2003, it raised $195,000 to put things like rocking chairs and vibrating exercise equipment to the senior citizens areas that aren't covered by the government. And I also went to the RE/MAX Open House that wasn't there. So it is this week, they tell me, so that was their mistake, not our mistake. And again, December 10th, it was a real wow to see the amount of people at the multiplex, the cutting of the ribbon, and Mayor Given did a tremendously good job. It was a, a real boon for the community. And Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. On December 1st, after our strategic planning session, I went out to the Stars Hanger for celebrate the five years the Stars have been in Grand Prairie. I'm sure glad they've been here, and I'm glad to hear they're going to stay for a long time. December 7th, I went to the Canadian Home Builders Open House that evening, and that was all for me, then I left town. So Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. November 30th, the final pending meeting called by the Chair of the Multiplex Building Committee. December 1st, City/County Recreation Committee Meeting, Council Strategic Priorities Session. And then I attended the first meeting of the Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Partnership Management Committee, where we reviewed the legislation, reviewed GPREP's kind of history the last three years as we've been working within grant monies, and we looked at a draft terms of reference, and we tabled our aid agreement for comment input from our partners. December 2nd, attended the Regional Solid Waste Study Presentation, city Christmas party, we had a great time. Santa Santa Christmas Parade, congrats and thanks to Helen and the Downtown Association for their leadership in organizing. Thanks to Jody, appreciated Councilor Crokin's comments. Jody works a ton to make sure that we have the candy, have the float, and get the candies to us so that we can get them to the kids. And thanks to all who, all who attended. December 5th, Scores Partnership Dinner. December 6th, I attended the Council Lifelong Learning Open House. December 7th, the Home Builders Mix and Mingle. December 8th, along with Mayor Given and Councilor O'Toole, I went to the Kids Place Play School and did some reading with the kids. And also, I went to the James Manor Christmas Tea. And December 10th, the Multiplex Ribbon Cutting, and then went to Wild Rose Manor, they had their annual Christmas craft and bake sale. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you much, Mayor Given. On December 1st, I also attended the Joint City/County Recreational Committee Meeting. After that meeting was over, we had our county strategy, or council strategy session, and after that meeting was over, we, I attended the Stars' fifth-year anniversary celebration at the airport base. On December 2nd, I attended the Solid Waste Study Presentation out at the Tech Center, and after that, I went to the Salvation Army Kettles, and I rung bells for two hours, and it was quite amazing to see the number of people just throwing money in to the kettles and just very generous people. Shortly after, oh, on December 3rd, I was involved in the Toys for Tots Christmas Toy Purchasing. The Toys for Tots group here is the second largest, longest group in Canada, only to Vancouver, which is the longest. There was eight volunteers that went shopping, and I was able to spend $4,000 for the ages of 10 to 13. That particular day, we spent $20,000 in toys and gifts. $1,400 went to the food bank, and $2,500 went into diaper bags for the pregnant teen group. I'd like to thank Larry DeBolt, who was my shopping cart driver. We filled it about eight times, so it was pretty awesome. And Terry Stauffer, the president of the Toys for Tots, was the, this would be his last Toys for Tots run as president. After that, I attended the City of Grand Prairie Christmas Party. It was awesome. And on the 4th, I went to the Wapiti Shooters Club, had a turkey shoot. I didn't win a turkey, but I attended. Had to cut my visit short, and I walked and handed out candy with, at the Santa Claus Parade. And once again, hats off to Jody and her daughter, Isabella, and her father was the truck driver that drove the truck, and thanks to Formula Powell for the donation of the truck. On the 5th, I attended the Scores Standing Committee Meeting at, with other fellow members at the council, and administration was also there. I also attended the Volunteer Services Bureau, and once again, hats off to Cheryl Weaver for being Volunteer of the Year. On the 7th, I attended the Home Builders Christmas Event. On the 8th, I got to listen to Mayor Bill read two books to the young children, and I got to play with quite a few young children that were attached to the grandpa-looking, Santa Claus-looking kind of guy like me, and that was a great time. And on the 8th, I attended the Chamber Mixer at Modern Decor. And on the 9th, I attended the Farmer's Market, had supper there and went downtown shopping. It was a great day. And on the 10th, we had our multiplex ribbon cutting, and that was another great day. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. December 1st, I attended council's strategic session. It was very productive, and we're going to be having them every quarter, and I'm looking forward to them. As well, I attended the Stars' fifth anniversary at the Hanger, and they had two- As well, I attended the Stars' fifth anniversary at the Hangar, and they had two helicopters in that day. Usually just have one. For some reason, they had another one, and it was really good to see it. Also, I attended the World AIDS Day 2011 on December 1st. Do a proclamation on behalf of Mayor Bill Given, and there's about over 5,000 Albertans that are positive of HIV, and also they have a calendar for awareness and getting tested. And there's two firemen on there, Chef Gavin, doctor, and I was tested a few years back as well, so I think it's a very good thing to do. As well, on December 1st, I was also at, attended the Community Village for lighting on the Christmas tree. It's a memory tree, and place someone they've lost in the past that they really loved. And that area has really been cleaned up and looks really good, and the Ovation Theater, it's really impressive what they've done around there. Also, on the 1st, I attended 10,000 Villages, sells handcrafts from developing countries in the world, about 36 countries. On December 2nd, I attended the Regional Solid Waste Study Presentation at the Tech Center. December 4th, I was also involved in giving out candy for the Santa Day Parade, and hats off to Jody, her daughter, her father, for getting Santa out to the community. And I understand Councilor Rice is big on making sure the floats are decorated, but we should be big on making sure that they're around with candy, because I think near the end, only two or three floats had candy, and ours was one of them. December 6th, I went to the Winter Open House of Lifelong Learning, which is located at the Lions Learning Center. And to speak to this from Melissa, Melissa Hunt from Lifelong Learning, she sent some news to council. Good news, received Alberta Government-funded Community Initiatives Program grant to fund ELL, Family English, until the end of June 2012. Thank you for your support of our program and the council. And with that, with a little help, I do believe the budget, $20,000, will give them time to get some funds from the private industry. So hats off there. Also, the same day, I attended the Men's Health Fair, which was hosted by Alberta Health Services, was held at the Rotary Room, Grand Prairie Public Library. The event was free. I've been in the city over 20 years, they never had one like this. This is the first of its kind, from diabetes, prostate cancer, testicular cancer, heart and stroke, et cetera. It was open to ladies, too, but emphasized on men. Hopefully, they'll have it next year. On December 10th, I attended the Golden Age Center on behalf of Mayor Bill Given, and I really liked this event. My girls had their Christmas preschool event, but I went to this, I committed, and had over 170 individuals at this dinner. It was packed, I guess, more than last year, and that was including the people helping with the food. And I took a bag of pins there, and I didn't have enough, because I think there's 120, 125, and they loved the pins, and it was really a good time. And I'd like to go next year, even if I'm not representing the mayor. December 10th, I also attended the Multiplex Ribbon Cutting Open. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. On Friday, December 2nd, I attended the Regional Solid Waste Study Presentation. On that following weekend, my wife and I spent the weekend playing host to past president of the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association, Darren Aldis and his wife Cheryl. This includes bringing them to the city Christmas party and touring them around the new multiplex facility. On Monday, December 5th, I attended the Christmas dinner with the Scores representatives. On Wednesday, December 7th, I attended the Centre 2000 Board Meeting, and then the Centre 2000 Christmas Celebration that afternoon. Then later that evening, I attended the Rainbow International One-Year Anniversary Celebration. Congratulations go out to Mike O'Connor and Cliff Turner for their success of their business, and thanks for the invitation to the event. On Thursday, December 8th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Mixer at Modern Decor. And on Saturday, December 10th, of course, I was there at the ribbon cutting at the multiplex. I thought it was a fantastic event. It's something we should all be really, really proud of. City council was present, as well as city staff, but I guess you can really see the regional impact of the facility. The province was represented there, the MD of Greenview for their contribution, the County of Grand Prairie was there, and the one thing I thought was really well-done was past city council members that had contributed to the whole vision of the community knowledge campus were invited to attend as well.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor Rice?
I attended for lunch the open house at the Elder Shelter, and it was very interesting, very interesting facility, and they certainly have some neat programming in place there. For, there's been a lot of discussion of the parade. I would sort of point out to Councilor McLean, he wouldn't have run out of candy if he hadn't been giving it away in handfuls. But what I really want to mention is to thank you, big thank you to Cupi, who marshals that parade, and they do it as volunteers. They do an absolutely tremendous job. I attended an Infrastructure and Energy Committee meeting at the AUMA office. I met with the Honorable Minister Dan Loch, the Minister of Transportation, as well as the Honorable Doug Griffith, the Minister of Municipal Affairs. And I attended a reception at the Government House with the Lieutenant Governor, where Mr. John McGowan, CEO of AUMA, was awarded the Outstanding CEO Award by the Lieutenant Governor, so a very, very exciting evening. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So on November 29th, I attended a meeting of the Grand Prairie Ministerial Association to share with them the City of Grand Prairie and council's vision for the upcoming terms, for the context of our financial situation, and some of the opportunities that I see on the horizon for the community to get involved. On December 1st, I was at the South Side Starbucks to participate in their World HIV and AIDS Day promotion. I was pouring drinks and giving some samples. Starbucks was donating five cents from every Starbucks drink at every one of their 17,000 locations worldwide to Project Red, so thank you very much to the team down at Starbucks on the South Side for inviting me down, and for Starbucks as a corporation for undertaking that. On December 2nd, I was at Evergreen Park with other members of council for the presentation on the Regional Waste Study. On December 3rd, I was, of course, at the city Christmas party, and want to say thanks very much to the staff who organized that. I think it was a fantastic time for all and an opportunity for us to say a small note of thanks to our staff who worked so hard throughout the course of the year. On December 4th, I attended with my daughter Mila at the Santa Claus Parade, and want to thank all the council members who attended and walked, the council members who were involved in organizing. Obviously, a fantastic weather for it this year and great turnout from the community. My daughter managed upstairs. Councilor Rice just asked if Mila made it all the way through. She did not make it for all the walk. I think she's getting a little tired of being in her snowsuit, so we went into the cab of the truck, and there were a number of people who commented that they remember seeing this gorgeous baby in the cab of the truck, and then they said, hey, wait a minute, wasn't that the mayor with her? So I think that's probably the way it's supposed to be. December 5th, I also had an opportunity to ring the kettles for Salvation Army at Costco, and want to thank the people who went by and for their generosity in contributing. December 5th, later that evening, I was at the Scores Meeting and wanted to note, first off, that Scores is a partnership between the City of Grand Prairie and the school boards, which is really probably unique in the province, if not unique, certainly the first of its kind in the province, has a long history, and we were able to welcome a new partner who's finally going to take a more active role, and that's the Francophone School District, and they're going to be a more active partner in Scores, and it was good to see them there and welcome them. December 8th, I was at Kids Place at Dave Bar, as was mentioned by the council members, to read some stories. I want to thank Councilor Radburn and Councilor O'Toole for attending. I think had it been myself on my own, I would have been overwhelmed by the kids who are all excited to be playing with the visitors that showed up. Later that day, I attended actually at Swan Haven School and took part in Roots of Empathy My daughter is part of the program where she goes on a regular basis and visits grade two, grade two class, and they get to learn about how a baby grows and develops. This is a longstanding City of Grand Prairie program that was initiated by the City of Grand Prairie, and after having a chance to participate in it personally, I think it's absolutely fantastic and want to commend all the staff and volunteers who put that on. Later that evening, I attended at the 10th anniversary of the Grand Prairie Rotor Act Club. And December 10th, of course, I was with a number of other members of council and the public as we cut the ribbon for the multiplex. It was an opportunity to recognize the history and how we get to this kind of opportunity to cut ribbon like that, and also a chance to recognize the staff and contractors who have made that gorgeous facility possible, and in particular, the staff who are committed to ensuring that it's open and ready for people all day, every day, as their motto is over there, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity for our community and for Northern Alberta to stay healthy and well. And then today, I was with the city manager all day. I was his elf as we went to seven different city facilities to drop off some Christmas greetings. We have a number of other city facilities to go to, but it's a tradition, I think, that's longstanding and probably gone through at least four different mayors and a couple of different city managers, and I think it's a great way for us to connect with the staff in all the different areas. And that's all the events that I had to highlight tonight. I did want to make one other note, though, an opportunity to note a significant change in the organization, and for council to give our congratulations and thanks. Our Public Works Director, Mr. Descovich, has announced that he's going to be moving on to other opportunities, and Frank's been with the City of Grand Prairie for a long time, has guided our Public Works Department through probably one of the most significant periods of growth that the city's ever seen, and as such, has had some pretty direct impact on a number of master plans, the creation of a number of different departments within the public works area. And I think through all those areas, it's safe to say that Frank's going to leave a lasting impact on our community through his work over the last number of years, and so just want to add my congratulations, Frank, and if council wants to.
Thank you, one and all.
So my understanding is that Mr. Descovich is going to be staying in the community, which is great news. We want to ensure that we keep our community assets where we have them. But Frank, if I can, on behalf of council, I'd like to extend my congratulations for your years of service and your thanks for all the work that you've given to the City of Grand Prairie over those years. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn our final city council meeting for 2011, and we'll see everybody again in 2012. Thank you. Mary Chris?